All right, it's seven o'clock, we'll call this meeting to order. Haley, can I get your call?
Councilmember Backus.
Here.
Councilmember Bain.
Here.
Councilmember Husnick.
Here.
Councilmember Egner.
Here.
And Mayor Winnick.
Here. I'd like to ask everyone to rise for pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I will look for a motion to approve the agenda, any changes to it.
So moved.
Do you have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Brings us to open forum. All right. First off, we've got the Forest Lake Historical Society here tonight. Mr. Berg is going to be presenting. I don't know if everybody's seen the new display cases in the hallway, but those were part of the Forest Lake Historical Society's efforts to get some of their materials out into the public to be seen, so welcome everyone.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, Mayor Winnick and City Council members. I'm Glenn Berg, 924 Forest Street, Forest Lake. I'm a lifelong resident of Forest Lake and currently, and a teacher in the school district, and currently the executive director of the Forest Lake Area Historical Society. I'm here tonight on behalf of the Historical Society, its volunteers, members, board of directors. And I would like to introduce the board first and foremost. We have G D Kane, our vice president, Gerald Larson, our vice president, and Karen Elm, our treasurer. We're here tonight to finally, once and for all, to introduce the society, to create some public awareness and explain what we've done and what we continue to do for the community. A little background about us. On June, June through July of 2011, a group of local amateur historians headed up by a local citizen set up a temporary museum in Forest Lake at the current site of Trade Wind Sports, or the old Hardware Hank building. On display was artifacts from individuals, businesses, churches, the school district, local municipalities, and like Columbus, Forest Lake, Scandia, and Wyoming cities, all donated material to put on display. All those artifacts unfortunately were on loan from the public and went back to them when the museum closed at the end of July in 2011. The museum was free of charge and had a six-week run. Artifacts ranged in date from the 1850s to the 1970s, and over 500 items were on display. Approximately 532 visitors signed the guestbook, and it's estimated that well over 800 came through, came through the doors. Half of those, I would say, would have were from out of state. Over $4,000 was raised, but unfortunately no funds were set aside for a future historical organization. Out of this, a group of citizens saw a need to form a historical society. So in 2011, late 2011, a group of concerned citizens, we met on various dates for about four months and finally developed a formal organization with bylaws, a board of directors, and a collections and dissemination policy. We are a full-fledged nonprofit organization that is incorporated to the state of Minnesota, and we make, or we're made up of volunteers, members with a governing board of directors. And not one person takes any funds or any money, it is 100% volunteer organization. We do not receive any funds from any municipalities, and we are here tonight not asking for any funding. We're here, we're supported by members, volunteers, and generous donors. Areas that we encompass, that the Historical Society encompasses is Columbus, Lionel Lakes, Linwood, Hugo, Scandia, and the Forest Lake area. We're working with, but not limited to, the school district, again, local municipalities, various museum organizations, churches, businesses, Washington County Historical Society, and the Minnesota Historical Society. What I would like to really emphasize is that the people of the past speak to us, but only if we're willing to listen, and the Historical Society's mission is to make those voices come alive once again. Our mission is the preservation of history, to provide access to artifacts, records for research, public displays, and provide educational opportunities to the public about the history of the Forest Lake area. What we've done and what we continue to do for the community since 2011 is in 2012, we set up a museum. The theme was recreation, mainly sporting and fishing events of the past. And we had a six-week run, which was 100% free and open to the public with over 900 visitors signing the guestbook. In 2013, we set up another museum, which was Schools, just on the Forest Lake School District, with a six-week run and 100% free and open to the public with over 1,300 visitors in the guestbook. In 2015, we set up displays through the Decades Reunion. Currently, we work closely with local municipalities, museums, businesses, citizens, in researching documentation and display of artifacts. Currently, we work closely with, again, other museums, businesses, citizens. And we also work with the Forest Lake Alternative Learning Center very closely with at-risk youth. Through their PBS program, which is Positive Behavior Intervention Program, we get students involved in the historian's craft. Students help us to document, catalog, and preserve items. They participate for us in the Fourth of July Parade. And we also publish three newsletters three times a year for members and volunteers. We hold meetings and events, an annual event, which is open to the public. We maintain a collection of over 1,000 artifacts that pertain to the Forest Lake area. Some of those artifacts can be seen, displayed right outside here in those display cases. Our original intention was to work with the city, but we discovered that brand-new display cases, professional display cases for security and for the security of the items, and to preserve the items would be well over $30,000 each, so $60,000 for two of them. So what the Society did is we did some research, and we came across two display cases for a hundred bucks total that we have on display out here, saving the city over $60,000. We would like to thank the city for allowing us to place those cases in the place that they are now, the public, for public display of the items. In conclusion, we would like to make an urgent plea to the public that the Forest Lake Area Historical Society has no permanent place, a building in which to call home. We're in an urgent need for a place where the Forest Lake area, that is open, in the Forest Lake area is open for public research, a place to preserve artifacts, and a place to have permanent displays. So on behalf of the Forest Lake Area Historical Society, we extend an invitation to all in our community to join us, for history is not just our past, it's also our future. Thank you.
Well, thank you very much. Appreciate it. And I think I'd like to, a couple of notes is, first off, if anybody does have artifacts to get ahold of you or contact the city, and they'll forward it to you as well.
Thank you, appreciate that greatly.
And I believe the cases came from the yellow bus and Dr. and Mrs. Quiker. So I want to thank them for their generosity as well.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
Have a great night.
Thank you.
Thank you, and everybody that helps out. All right. Elvin, you're up next.
My name is Elvin Norby, 10255217th Street North, City of the Old Township. First of all, I bring up here, I want, this is for Dan. He sent me a bill that says utility bill enclosed. I wonder what kind of utilities are you providing me with?
I'd have to take a look at it. I didn't personally send it.
This is at 40 bucks. There are no utilities in here, never will be.
I'd have to look at it for you.
It's a misnomer, fake news. Okay, the other, I do have one thing that is important to me, though. Looking at the, first thing on the agenda here is SRC. I've been back here almost 30 years now, and I've been dealing with them ever since I've been here. And I live on the Dead End Road on 217th. They've been very reliable and very reasonable. And I know we have to deal with the Met Council. When the Met Council wants more money, they tell you what they're charging you, and you pay it. I think that the SRC is between a rock and a hard place now, things are happening. The recycling business is changing around a lot, and their costs are going up and up. And I think whatever they're going to present you with tonight, I don't want you to hassle them. And I'd like you to move it forward fast. Don't beat it to death. Go ahead and listen to what they got to say, and if it sounds reasonable, let's go ahead and accept it. I'm willing to pay my fair share. And like I said again, I've been dealing with them people since I've been here, and they've provided an excellent service, so let's move their agenda forward. Thank you.
Thank you. You're probably going to get a free pickup next week, too. Matt Armanson, Armanson?
Good evening, Council. Matt Armanson, 15th Avenue Southeast. I'm speaking tonight regarding the possibility of Steve Stegner being the city administrator. Everyone, I understand that Steve Stegner was a former mayor, he owns a couple businesses in town here. Despite the obviously obvious conflicts of interest, it's very well-known around town that the mayor and Stegner are good friends and meet quite frequently to talk about topics in the city, as they did during the police issue a year ago.
That's not true.
This is my three minutes, thank you, Mayor. I caution the city council when considering Mr. Stegner for the city administrator. Please keep in mind that the disbanding of the police department started when Stegner was mayor. Mike Zipko, the PR firm, was hired to handle this police issue, and he was hired when Stegner was mayor. So when Stegner sits in a meeting and says that he has good relationships with department heads and such, I suggest he ask around, although I'm guessing no one will talk freely about it, fearing backlash from the mayor. Stegner was also a deciding vote when they decided to lay off Officer Max. Also during the police issue, Stegner rented
Was not on the board at that time. That was me that was the deciding vote?
Is this going against my time? During the police issue, Stegner rented an uninhabitable house to Councilmember Mike Freer. The house was in a TIF district, had no walls, no furniture, wires hanging down, nothing. But Stegner thought it was ethical to drop a fictitious lease on a house that was not livable. He thought it was okay to rent a house and allow a council member to use that house and that address, yet live in Maple Grove, so he could still be on the city council. Then he stated he was planning on fixing the house to make it livable. This was after, he went after the city to pay for damages to the house that he says the city workers, that was the city worker's fault. There was never a permit pulled from the city for fixes on that house. To me, this sounds very unethical. It's very obvious that Mr. Stegner, Mayor Winnick, Councilmember Freer were all in this together to further their personal agendas on the police issue, and Stegner wanted to finish what he started. Now the city hires the Mercer Group that openly states in a meeting that Stegner is not qualified for this position. And if the council picks Stegner, they will not stand by the council's decision and guarantee a replacement if he doesn't work out. If you're going to spend $20,000 of the Forest Lake people's money on a recruitment firm, I say we strongly consider their suggestion for city, for the city administrator position. Obviously not Stegner. Thank you.
Mike Devine.
Mike Devine, 5236 200th Street North. And I apologize, I thought it was going to be on the agenda for today. So I'm not sure if I'm just a week off or what, but my concern is the Lila school expansion. I live on the street that's on the north side border of their property. And from the beginning, it seems that they are very aware that they have not enough parking for what they expect for students and staff. The very first thing I saw from them on that was they were going to have students do a lottery system for parking, which tells me right off the bat, they know they don't have enough parking for their students. The next person stands up and says, oh, they got plenty of spots by some state statue that they have an extra 15 spots or something on a parking lot that I guess doesn't even have legal-sized spots. So I'm a little concerned with that. The other thing that really concerns me is one of the two exits that they will have for basically half of their traffic is going to go out the west. The other one out the east is going, it sounds like it's pretty much dedicated to that new east parking lot they're going to be doing, and the buses. I can only imagine from that roundabout and the other ones we have here, once all those buses and everybody from that east parking lot start filtering out, the only way they can go is south on Fenway Avenue into that roundabout that was built last year. Well, my concern is when, when the cars that leave the west side parking lot that the school says are just going to naturally turn left, once they see all the traffic and have trouble getting into that roundabout, pretty quickly, they're going to figure out, they can take a right, and a street that Donovan said is, and I've known, is supposedly going to be opened up between the school and a block of houses up there in the middle of building. They're probably going to open it up fairly soon here in the next few months. Those people that leave Lila are going to figure out that they can take a right, not have to deal with the roundabout, and have one stoplight between Lila and getting to Quick Trip on 97. I would, and I did not go through and count, I would be willing to bet you there's 30 kids that live on that mile and a quarter worth of street. I'm very concerned about the extra traffic. We came in front of the council one other time with this traffic issue through our neighborhood that has gotten, I wouldn't say out of control, but it's pretty obvious it's more than a residential road. That, it's more than a residential road. And these people that are leaving the YMCA are finding that instead of going all the way down Fenway, they can cut through the neighborhood. Now with the school being that much closer, and you know, they're, I'm going to guess an hour to hour and a half block when everybody leaves that school and shows up at that school, they're going to figure out real quick, there's a really nice shortcut through our neighborhood. I would like to ask the council to please look at their maps, and if there is any possible way to keep that Farnham Street closed off between basically Eagle Bluff, which is my neighborhood north of the school, and the Headwaters, I believe it's the Seventh Edition, which is south of us. We asked it before, I don't know if we had quite enough case to the city council because of the YMCA, and they're a little bit distant from us. But now with Lila being right there, they only have the two exits, I can really see that as a huge issue. The other issue that I have with them and their, their whole parking structure that has been a huge topic ever since this started is I'm really concerned with kids that maybe don't make the lottery for parking, or maybe just drive to school a few times here and there and didn't want to pay the money. How can we defend our neighborhood and not have them fill up our streets with their cars so they can just walk across the field and not have to pay the 300 bucks, whatever it is, I believe that's what it is at our high school, and not have to pay the fee and drive on the days they feel like it, and maybe the days, you know, take the bus in the winter, whatever their system is. But we all know high schoolers, they would much rather walk that half a block and save the 300 bucks they probably don't have, especially if they only drive to school once a week, or, you know, sporadically. So I would really ask the city council to look at that and have them, get some answers from them. I would like to ask that maybe you require them to have some off-site parking. There's a really nice triangle piece, another block south on Fenway. I'm sure the Parks Department and Lila could probably make a deal and put a parking lot there. Parks Department needs it for when their ballfields are being used in the weekends. Lila could really use it on the weekdays. So, thank you very much. I hope you make those considerations with the Lila school.
Thank you very much. Donovan, is that coming up at a next meeting, or?
The Planning Commission approved the site plan for that, the latest Lila CUP amendment.
Okay, all right. So you don't know when it's coming forward, though?
No, I mean, it received its final approval. There were a series of conditions that they have to be met. If, or actually, certain conditions were triggered by traffic or other issues with circulation that city, the city would meet with Lila administration and, you know, resolve those.
Okay. Can we make like a right turn only or left turn only, so they can't go through the neighborhood or local traffic only signage, something like that?
Well, that remains to be seen. I know that we discussed the right only, coming out of Farnham, and, you know, there are many residents who have, you know, who live in actually Headwaters, who moved there to be, you know, neighbors of Lila, who then they would, they would have to do, you know, all sorts of turnarounds in order to get home to their place. And so, I mean, in many ways, we, you know, we do expect greater traffic. We've designed it so that a lot of the traffic will be, go directly onto Farnham, I mean, onto Fenway and not Farnham. And it was the result of a lot of discussion at Planning Commission.
Okay. Dick Cheetah.
Mr. Mayor, Council, Dick Cheetah, 21833 Healy. I'd like to give you a handout. Knowing that the budget meetings are going to be just around the corner, I thought that it would be good to have something to look at as a format that I've been concerned about. And so I put together a comparison between airport hangars rental and values versus commercial property, because the usage should be very close. If you, what, if you look at what I put down, I put down basically a valuation, appraised value of the structure, whether it's a hangar or a building, at a quarter of a million dollars. I think we all know that the real estate tax on commercial property is about 3.5%. There's no homestead credit, and that would be on a commercial property that would generate $8,750 on the structure itself. Now, the personal property, according to what I found at the state, is an average of about 1.5%, similar to that of residential. Looking at that same piece of property at 1.5%, that'd be $3,750. We all know that the appraisal on the property down in the industrial park at the time that the property was annexed into the city, and again, at the time that the county put their buildings up down there, there was a valuation put on it, and basically the county got the property at 50 cents on the dollar. The appraised value at that time was $105,000 an acre, including infrastructure. I looked at it, and I looked at a number of parcels over there to get an idea of what size of parcels were, and a good number was about 7,500 square feet. And so at 7,500 square feet, basically what you're looking at is a tax on a commercial piece at that size would be $656. But we all know there's no tax on airport property. The tax, in lieu of tax, is a rental fee, and the rental fee is 10 cents a square foot. So on that same parcel, it'd be around $750. And the purpose of this is, is to get a comparison, because under normal circumstances, buildings and structures like are down there in hangars are very similar to what a commercial requirement would be. And so consequently, I'm trying to put together an apples-to-apples type of view on it and give you just some insight. Because the final product here, when you, when you roll it all the way down and look at the revenue that is returned to the city on a commercial piece of property, it'd be $2,821, and that's based on 30% of the real estate costs or taxes that are there. The real estate, the gross tax is $9,406, but the, we know we're a third player, is what it is. Sometimes it's a little more, sometimes it's a little less. So when you look at it, the bottom line really is, if it was commercial property, the city would be getting $2,821. If it's rented out on the hangar space, it's $750. And as a taxpayer, a part of the community, I think there should be equalization. And that's why there's a little note on there that says, "Equalizer." And in order to be the equalizer, you'd have to multiply the rental fee by 3.8. Now we're back to apples and apples. And I think that that's a transparent way of looking at it. I think it's the benefit to the community, because as I see it as a citizen in the community, number one benefit factor on the airport, MinDOT Aeronautical. It's a reliever airport for international. That's why we got the money in the first place. Number two, we as citizens have no benefit personally. So the number two is going to be the owners of the structures that are on the property itself. And last line is the community. And what I'd like to do is figure out what kind of benefit we're getting.
Thank you. Jeff Klein.
Hello, mayors, members of the council, if I can get this up to my height. I guess I may have some comments, but really, I just want some clarification. It's been reported in the paper that you've settled on three city administrator finalists with an option to add a fourth, possibly Mr. Stegner. I was just curious if anyone up there can clarify what that really means, so he is or is not a candidate.
That discussion will be coming up at council later.
Later tonight?
Correct.
Okay, well, fair enough. With that in mind, I would like to speak to that potential just for a little bit, and it's nothing against him per se. It's more or less directed at the council, you know. I mean, this isn't Hazard County here. At some point, we need to act like a real city here. We hired a search firm specifically to do this task, who went so far as to say it would void the warranty if you went down that road, yet we continue to go down it. Again, and I wish Steve was here, because I really don't want to speak against him, because I spoke with him the other day, and I don't even doubt his belief that he believes he's the right person for the job. And, you know, we joke, because I always say, Steve, you know, I always have mixed feelings about you. So it's, it's nothing against him, it's this, the process, we do things. And I think Mr. Norby and Mr. Schaefer can appreciate this, but we're heading down this road with an unelected official. Granted, you were appointed, sir, but, you know, you're an unelected official. So here we are, the same argument you always bring up with Molly. I'm going to challenge you, if this goes down, not to do that, just for equal thing. True that. All right. So, again, I just, I'm not sure why the city's always courting controversy, because this, like anything else, will become controversial. And I mean, beyond the obvious conflicts of interest people brought up, I mean, you can go as far back as 2012, Mr. Mayor, when he was your campaign manager for city council. You know, so I would think that would be a conflict of interest. I mean, he was a member of the LABA during the time that you guys sued the city for the building of this very building. Now, whether he voted to do it or wanted to do it, he was still a member of the LABA. And sorry, I can't say those letters without doing the quote thing, it's a little nervous tic of mine. But I'm not going to go in on the freer residency thing, which he took responsibility for. And I don't know if that's an upstanding move, or just kind of points out to what actually went down. But even if you go by the property now, the TIF district property that was the fraudulent address for Mike Freer for a time, there's four signs there against Sheriff Starry's reelection for his opponent. And his opponent is a fine person, but I'm thinking with four signs on that very property, it's at very least, it's kind of tone deaf, and at the worst, it's kind of antagonistic, because Sheriff Starry's obviously looked at in this community as someone who because Sheriff Starry's obviously looked at, in this community, as someone who, you know, was quite instrumental in saving the Forest Lake PD. So, in closing, I guess, like I said, this really isn't about Mr. Stegner, it's just about the way this council, this government in this city rolls, and I would just challenge, I don't know if he's watching at home or if I'm on there, but I would challenge you, Mr. Stegner, to withdraw your name as a candidate and come down here tomorrow morning and file for mayor, because that way, the people can truly decide if what we want to do is go under Mr. Stegner's leadership. And I will just say between you and me, the math does favor you, so I would encourage you to do that. Thank you.
And Ron Schaefer.
Ron Schaefer, Forest Lake. I want to speak a little bit about the storm water runoff, the biggest boondoggle I've ever seen. Is there any tax that anybody's ever heard of that rose as fast as this one? I'll tell you, a good example is, take this guy here and put him in charge. If he bought them display cases for that much off, he'd be great to run that storm water runoff. I don't understand how it got this far, and I was hoping that the gentleman on the end would tell us what the water runoff fee is going to. For one thing, somebody did it. Somebody caused the problem. Did we ever look and see to find out who's to blame? And if we did, if we found out, why couldn't we make them make amends? I don't care how you sue them, and if they're dead, sue their, their survivors. Do something that helps the people. Forty bucks a, a parcel now is getting kind of high. Cost me eighty bucks. I don't want to spend that kind of money here. I want to keep my money in my pocket. Now, talking about Stegner, I don't know who these guys are, but Stegner was a great mayor. I admired him, and I still do. Now, the police, I understand that they didn't like him, I don't know just exactly why. But, you know, the police did a heck of a job getting that, getting rid of that county thing. And, and what I didn't understand was, if you stay thirty years on the police department, you get free hospitalization for ten years. I'm jealous. I was in civil service for thirty-seven years, I didn't get it. How do I get it? Does anybody know? Give it to me somehow. And let's, let's start, you said you saved a million bucks. Let's try for two. Taxes are too high. Thank you.
All right. That ends the open forum. It's closed already, Eugene. Sorry. I'm sorry. What's the council feel?
We've got time.
Yeah, he's at the end.
I'm open.
You're open.
Go ahead.
Go ahead.
As long as we're open for a rebuttal.
Eugene Hurstel, 10234, 204th Street North. I guess, you know, we all want to be objective somewhat, and there's a lot of perception out there, and there are some facts that, and you can decide on your own if you can get the facts, but when things are put out there all the time about a bunch of innuendos and, "I'm thinking he thought this," and, I don't know, I guess we've got some mind readers that can go pretty far in their perception. Here's the thing, on the part of the facts is that Mr. Stegner, and I don't, I'm not one way or another whether he should be administrator or anything, but maybe a few facts that Mr. Freer could not find a, a place to, a residence because of having, for his family, and I think some other people have also moved out of the city because they couldn't find a place to rent either. But it was all legit, maybe in your minds, you don't think it is, but when he, or what exactly happened is, he asked the city to turn the water off, and it was during the winter, and the water didn't get turned off, and he got a bill for, I think, around thirteen-hundred dollars in one month, and then went and checked on it, and the pipe had broken and ruined a lot of the, the area. Okay, so, then he had, Mr. Freer has intentions of moving in at a certain point, but because of the, the law, the issues that they had, and the suing, and everything else that was going on, and trying to get the lawyers and get everything together, it didn't pan out. Now Mr. Freer isn't there, okay? He has resigned from it and stuff. I don't think it's a good thing when we actually go up there and go on people's private property, and we take pictures, and then we make it for a campaign slogan. And right now, I understand our, our police, they've got a good thing going. I don't think it's going to be the big issue, you're going to try to make it an issue, I realize, of people running and whether you're on one side or another. But I would hope that we could move on, and that some of this stuff that we're making, making up, Mr. Stegner, maybe he does want to run. I don't know. But, and he could run for mayor and, and see how it goes there. I'm, I'm perfectly fine with that. I'm perfectly fine with other people trying to run and stuff. Thank you.
All right. That closes up the open forum.
Yep.
Yes.
Yeah, it's even stealing.
Chris Martin, 99113rd Avenue, southeast Forest Lake, Minnesota. I guess my comments this evening are, again, back to the Mercer Group, that our council agreed to hire the Mercer Group to come up with the cream of the crop. They went through an entire barrel, all right, of applicants, and they brought the cream of the top up to the top for you guys to look at and interview. And I find out in the paper that one of the people that didn't make it in the top got pulled out of the bottom of the barrel and got stuck there for the, the council interview. I don't understand why you would not listen to a group that this is what, this is their business, this is what they know how to do. I don't have anything against Steve Stegner, but you had a lot of very, very qualified applicants there, that I just think by pulling that one out was the wrong thing to do. And it is even more wrong to me if you guys would vote this person in, knowing that a twenty-thousand-dollar contract is now going to be null and void. Thank you.
No one else? All right. Maybe we can close open forum now. Look for approval of the consent agenda. I've been asked to remove item six G for further clarification.
Mr. Mayor, I would make a motion to approve all items on the consent agenda except for item G.
Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
All right. Item six G, was that Dan Reed?
I can probably just update, there was, if you look at the version that was in the packet that was sent out, there was a couple of drafting errors in that one where the years were, one was eighteen, one was nineteen. So we did go back through, and there was a clean copy that actually has the correct years. Perhaps Bridget could speak a little bit more to that, but it just basically, I just wanted to make sure that we're approving the number that has the right. We have corrected those drafting errors and are now looking at the actual correct contract, so that's why we request it, if you pulled separate consideration.
All right. So we'll look for a motion to approve six G as amended by staff.
I'll make a motion to approve six G as amended by staff.
Second?
Motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. All right. Seven A, SRC rate adjustment. And Marge is going to...
Yeah, at this point, I, this is up to SRC to kind of present their, their rate and their case at this point.
So, I just, for council's clarification too, so SRC is going to present a rate adjustment. Since it was not on the agenda, we can have a discussion if we want to move forward, how we want to do it, and bring it back at the next meeting for final action. Go ahead, Marge.
I'm here tonight to ask for a rate adjustment in our garbage service contract with the city, due to some contractual arrangements. We've had increases in our tipping fee, and we're expecting another one Janu- we have one January first of eighteen, and we'll have another one January first of nineteen. We have also been faced with a crisis in our recycling market, and I would like to give you copies.
Just reading material.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
There's an island in the Pacific where all the tide waters and currents seem to draw all the plastic that's floating in the ocean. It's killing the marine life, and the size of this island, which we will have nothing to do with right now, is more than the size of Texas. And this little article in the paper gives you some information on how much garbage is killing our wildlife, our marine life is ingesting it, and plastic is a problem. In the meantime, China has refused to take our recyclables. They have been reprocessing plastic and cardboard and whatever else we send them, paper, and now they've stopped that. So, for the month of June, we got a bill for processing the recycling for over six-thousand dollars, almost seven-thousand dollars. We had been receiving a nominal fund from that prior to that of about two-thousand dollars a month. So actually, our differential is talking about nine-thousand dollars a month difference in our cost of recycling at this time. We have no idea where it's projected to go, but as long as we don't have a market for our recyclables, it's going to be expensive to process the recycling. Right now, I've looked at numbers that we have, taking into consideration the increase in 2018 for our tipping fee down at Newport for processing our garbage, the one coming up in 2019. I've projected it over the balance of our contract, which is the next eleven months, and I've come up with these numbers, prorating everything. We're asking for a dollar and eighty-three cents a month for the next eleven months, September through next July, to cover the additional tipping fees which began January first of 2018. I did ask for that increase back in December, and it was tabled. Our increased tipping fee beginning January first of 2019 adds another dollar and four cents a month. Estimating, and this is just estimating, a seven-thousand-dollar-a-month cost for recycling would add another dollar and seventy-eight cents per customer per month, just to break even. Our contract guarantees us a 1.7% consumer price index, which adds another thirty cents on average to bring us ba- that's in the contract, to bring us back to evening, even with nothing extra. Adding this all together over the next eleven months, September through July, brings our price of four dollars and ninety-five cents a month per customer additional cost, assuming we have no other increases for recycling. This amount puts us back to where our prices were ten years ago. Insurance, taxes, wages, benefits have continued to increase, besides the fact that surrounding communities have signed contracts for much greater monthly revenue. If you have any questions, I'd be glad to answer them if I can.
To clarify first, tipping fee, that's what you pay...
That's what we pay for the plant at Newport to burn your garbage.
And you're bound to haul your garbage to that plant, right?
Unless, I'm, I'm not sure whether we're bound. Cameron always felt that he wanted to support, he was very strong on supporting the laws of what we were supposed to do. And I'm not sure right now, Ben, if we can haul it to Wisconsin and go across state lines. He was never willing to do that because of the liability that would come with the landfill filling over in Wisconsin. The long-term liability has been a deterrent. He wanted to support Cameron, and, and I will continue that support.
And that's the county facility, right?
That's the county, it's owned by the county. The prices went up ten percent this year, January first of 2018. We were paying seventy dollars a ton, they went up to seventy-seven dollars a ton. In 2019, they will go up to twenty, or seventy-nine dollars a ton, plus we will lose another two-dollar rebate that we have been getting to equalize the prices. So actually, we'll be going up four dollars a ton effective January first of nineteen.
Okay. And obviously, the recycling is losing money right now.
Oh, it always has. It's always been more expensive to process the recycling than the garbage.
So in, in this contract, in the next X months that it is, if for some reason that recycling flipped around and you were getting a profit, would that be something that you would be...
That'd be wonderful.
Would you be willing, I mean, if, if we come to an agreement on pricing...
We can revisit it.
Would that be something that we could...
I'm open to that. I'm open to revisiting, absolutely.
Open up the council. Any questions for Marge? Ed, go ahead.
Marge, could you, I'm a little bit lost on the six-thousand-dollar bill you got. Is that for the month of June, the six-thousand-dollar increase, or is that prorated past from the beginning of the year?
No, 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 that's just for one month.
And going forward, it'll be an additional six thousand every month?
Yes. That is our understanding at this time.
You think it may get worse, or is that about...
I wouldn't doubt if it gets worse. There is no market for plastic, there's little market for paper. The only items that have ever truly been recyclable, that, an aluminum can can be made back into an aluminum can. A newspaper has to be degraded and maybe put into cardboard or some other kind, some other form of paper. Steel is recyclable. They can still make tin can out of a tin can. Plastic is made, the seven grades of plastic are made with so many different chemicals added to each grade of plastic, and they're melted at so many different temperatures, there is nothing productive that can come, even a curb stop or a park bench. It's more expensive to make that out of recycled plastic than, than new stuff. It's junk. It's killing our environment.
So, I, so we are four years into, what is a five-year contract, is that, is that correct?
That's correct.
And just for audience benefit, the rate increase that's being proposed, depending on size of container, ranges between a twenty-two percent or a twenty-eight percent increase. I can appreciate the changes in tipping fees, and I can appreciate the changes in what the recycling market has done, but I'm not in your business, so I really struggle on if this is reasonable. To me, the only way to really tell if it's reasonable is to go out to bid, because conceivably everybody who's in this business is facing the same challenges, and it's quite possible that Forest Lake residents are underpaying and we need to pay more, but I think the only way to truly know that in a market where we have an exclusive is to invite some bids to the table. Otherwise, I, you know, I'm open to something smaller, I don't exactly know what I'm comfortable with, but I know that's something that's in the twenty percent range, and my, and I'm making a purchase decision for every single resident in Forest Lake, I feel obligated to see what else the market can bear.
There's a new contract that's been signed in the city of St. Paul for thirty-five dollars a month, and they've got about eight miles to drive. The eight miles is the furthest to drive to their disposal fee, the disposal location. We're driving thirty-six miles.
And, and I can appreciate that going to bid makes you nervous. I, I'm not... And I can appreciate that going to bid makes you nervous. I'm not expecting you to like that answer.
Well, it doesn't make me nervous.
I think that you have an-
Makes me angry that you would not support a Forest Lake business.
I'm not saying I'm not supporting a Forest Lake business, I'm saying I think we need to understand what the total change, price change is. And you have a benefit of being the incumbent. But a twenty-eight percent increase is substantial and we are making the decision for every single resident in Forest Lake. I'm challenged to support it.
Well, I have concerns going out to bid now might end up a lot higher than the-
And then we, and then we take a twenty-eight percent increase and we, and we say that's just the number, but at least we know that that's what the number needed to be. I, and again, I can appreciate that perhaps you are in need of more rate, but I'm just not sure what's reasonable.
The only issue I have, and I can't tell you whether these numbers are correct, not correct, not having an opportunity to research the numbers, but I guess my feeling right now is I, I want to know that the numbers are correct before we, before I make a decision. I, I mean, you could tell me it's going up fifty percent and I, I don't have any rebuttal right now, but I sure want to find one.
What more do you need, Ed?
Well, I would like to, you know, compare some other companies and see ideally where we're at.
I'd like to see historical trends of tipping fees. It's not that I don't believe you, but in my position, I really can't just take your word for it, I apologize for that. I'm definitely looking at it, but a borderline thirty percent increase without having to take a bigger look on it. I can't just sign away everybody's a thirty percent increase on their waste. I definitely don't expect you to lose money doing business and doing a service for the community either, so.
I can sure appreciate the increases in tipping fees, there's no question about that. And, and some of these things are, they kind of leap up at you in the middle of the contract and I understand that. Same thing with fuel costs. I mean, how do you bid fuel costs five years on, you know, in advance? Now lately, the fuel costs have been fairly reasonable, but those are things that are really tough to have a handle on for five-
But on a fuel cost, and I don't know, Marge, do you charge a fuel surcharge?
Not in this contract.
But you could have.
No.
If you wanted to protect yourself against fuel costs.
Well, it would have to be in the contract.
No, no, but what I'm saying is she agreed to the contract.
Well, I understand, I'm just, I'm just talking about the variables that happen, that's all it's, what it amounts to. And I can appreciate that. But it's, it'd be a hard thing to sell at twenty-eight percent, I mean, if we could come up with some kind of a compromise on that.
I guess one other thing I would, I'm taking into account is, I would expect, if we're going to give a five-year exclusive for residential services, that we're going to bid it in five years anyway. I'm not comfortable with just an assumption that we do an automatic renewal. So in my mind, we're really just moving a bid process forward by a few months because in my, I would again expect that we're at least doing some level of additional study or bid upon renewal anyway, so. To me, it's just a timing situation. And it potentially gives you rate increase before the contracts expire.
It would certainly keep everybody on an even keel, and that's quite, no question about that.
I think if you look to, you know, through the packet, Dan, you did, you did some rate-
Yeah, just brief back at the napkin math on it. And to kind of speak to, I did reach out to other communities that were kind of, I mean, this is not unique to Forest Lake. I mean, this is not unique to, you know, we're not in a microcosm here. There have been other cities that were kind of under organized collection. They kind of, their holler come back in and says, again, market changed, we need to do a rate adjustment. I don't have their numbers, what the proposal was, they were pretty light on detail and I talked to them, but they actually went back out and they reopened it up for RFP. They were kind of in a very similar situation to where Forest Lake was in terms of the length of their contract. And again, this contract had been bid out years and years in the past and they kind of said the market conditions had drastically changed, holler comes back in much like this and said, we need a rate adjustment, comes in at that point and said, we're close to the end, let's just do, you know, kind of advance it. That's what they ended up settling upon. Because again, it's the, it's tough when you look at when this contract was bid out years ago, tipping fees were less and the recycling market was completely different. Now, the downside with that is if you go to bid now, with the commodity market the way it is, you may see increases because that market's not there like it was when this contract originally let four years ago. So, that's the calculus, I mean, and there really isn't a good way to predict that unless you go through scores and scores of data to say, you know, I mean, kind of beyond my level of expertise in terms of this particular industry. However, at first cut, when I did just some initial looking into where some of the recycling rates were, there are some experts that are saying that some of the worst could be behind the price structure because the Chinese ban on recyclables happened in first quarter. So we're kind of, the market right now is absorbing that lock, that basically that market has evaporated up. The US market hasn't had a chance to respond to that. That's not saying that it will, but some of these experts are predicting that while the market is really bad right now, they're saying that potentially that the worst is kind of behind us, we're kind of, they maybe reached the bottom. Now, I'm not saying that's the case, I'm just saying when I kind of looked at some other research out there, that's one indicator. Conversely, you could say it could get worse, you know, I mean, that's always the other side of the coin on this one, especially for the plastics and cardboard market. However, you look back at when some of these other contracts went out, like for the city Hugo, for example, back in last October, some of this had been kind of in, had been in play in terms of market predictions. They were kind of, China was starting to restrict what they were taking, so it wasn't as open as it had been in the past, so there was some of that market correction starting to happen in October. And if you look at where Hugo bid, you know, if you kind of did again, back to the napkin analysis of it, Hugo came back in where this rate adjustment would put it in scope. However, there were some that bid Hugo and a competitive open market that were less and they were some that bid high. So again, that's the calculus, you know, I mean, but again, you need to look for their analysis in just comparing one city or a handful of Washington County cities with organized collection because I just don't think that's enough to get a good idea. The best way to get that information is to put it out for an RFP, if you want a true market, what the market's going to bear, because those prices that come back on the RFP are what the market's going to bear at this day.
Are any of those contracts, you heard of changing the way they have their language to reflect, you know, go away from CPI or factor in tipping fees, any of those new contracts?
I, you know, I haven't seen the language in any of the new contracts. Every contract's a little bit different in terms of the wording, in terms of the structure, which again, makes a contract-to-contract comparison pretty difficult to do because you may have seen artificially low price, but they may have something else that's in there that's riding that up and down, so it's kind of tough. So it's like, even normalizing, if, say, we're doing a ninety-six gallon container and they're charging for a ninety-gallon container, you gotta bring it down to a per gallon container to extrapolate it out, so everybody's kind of apples to apples. But unless you do contract to contract to contract to every single variable that's in there, that's the only way you're going to get a true picture of what everything is. And at this point, there hasn't been time for that level of analysis to begin. So I mean, again, if you want to know what the best way the market's going to bring is to do an RFP, because that sets the parameters, that sets the contract, that's going to say, you know, based on these conditions for the city of Forest Lake, these are the numbers, you know, and that puts everybody kind of on an even playing field.
Sounds to me like some of these contracts should be shortened up, you know, three years or something like that.
That much volatility in the market likely.
Because there's too many variables.
And I think the variables now are definitely something that's a creature of the last eighteen months or twelve months. I mean, granted, you can kind of see the commodities market always does a shift, but when China basically said, we're not taking anything more that caused a definite stranglehold of the market and all of a sudden you have paper products now that at one point had value, you know, some value to it, are now, you know, and again, if you do, if you Google this, the situation is all over the country. We're not unique even Minnesota, I mean, it's happening in Michigan, you know, the same, exact same issue's happening. So, the market definitely has changed and, you know, I guess the best way to approach a new market, you know, would be to do an RFP.
The price increase that I'm asking for is documented in a ten percent increase of my tipping fee at Newport for twenty eighteen and another four dollar a ton increase coming in twenty nineteen. Those are documented solid prices. So is my consumer price index, documented. And I'm asking for those solid numbers and I gave you comparison numbers back in December of surrounding communities in Washington County and what they are charging.
Well, I think, Dan, you put together even with the, with the rate increase, we're not nearly the highest one off. We're still more middle of the road.
Let me just show, I mean, granted, again, this was just, I mean, I got these numbers this afternoon and some of the stuff came from Washington County, so I mean, take this analysis with, you know, that grain of salt. So, basically, I asked Washington County at one point for, you know, what are other cities within the county who have organized collection? Because again, I wanted to do organized collection cities to other organized collection cities, so at least there's a little bit of a baseline there. What I tried to do, so they sent over a ninety-five gallon, again, this is what they reported in their system. So I didn't go back through and do that level of contract analysis to make sure these numbers are actually verifiable. I just took the information at Washington County as the baseline. So what I did was I took that down to a per gallon basis to bring it up to the city of Forest Lake's ninety-six gallons. So I took the ninety-five gallon quote that they gave, divided that price, you know, the eleven eighty-seven, divided that out by ninety-six gallon, ninety-five, got a per gallon basis and then took it times ninety-six to bring it up to a price. So if you look at where we are currently, which is a seventeen eighty-four for a ninety-six gallon container, we're right about mid-pack. I mean, we're, you know, I mean, the next jump up is a, you know, pretty, about a dollar and, you know, about a two dollar change increase to go to the next level up. If with the proposed increase at four ninety-five, that puts us, you know, at twenty-two seventy-nine, which is just right below Stillwater's bid. Again, when you look at these numbers, bear in mind that I don't know when Stillwater got their bid. I don't know when they put it out to market, they could have already absorbed that increase in cost. Afton could have basically got a higher cost. I know one of the cities in here was approached by their holler saying we need an increase in this. I don't have specific details as to what that increase was. But again, just wanted to show that this is not a, you know, an anomaly within the system. Also, we just got the numbers from Hugo, again, just back of the napkin math in terms of what it would look like in an open market. Now, this would be if you had competitive, competitive haulers coming in, multiple haulers coming in to the city of Forest Lake. Again, current rate seventeen eighty-four puts us on the top three in terms of lowest rate. The rate increase puts us, again, probably smacked up in the middle in the number that reported in Hugo. Now again, Hugo reported on a ninety gallon container, I didn't go do site verification of the ninety gallon container is actually what's in the field at this point. I normalized it back up to ninety-six gallons to try to make it as apples to apples as I possibly could. But again, looking at that, you're seeing potentially in the open market, with these are being bid out at the end of seventeen, or end of, yeah, excuse me, end of seventeen, where you're starting to maybe absorb some of that Chinese reduction in what they are taking built into the market. But this, again, these numbers here all are prior to that complete ban. So again, these numbers in the open market could look completely different going into, going into the fall. So I mean, it does kind of show that this situation here is not, there really isn't a, I guess from my analysis perspective on it, there really isn't the clear cut. You go to open market, you're going to definitely come back with a cost savings, you know. You could come back with an increase because again, these numbers here do show that, you know, we're getting, we're mid-pack in terms of Hugo being an open market. Now theoretically though, if you have a closed market, if you have more monopolistic pricing structure, you should see, you know, a decrease in overall hauling rates because there is some economies of scale that come into play when you're dealing with a city where you don't have to fight off competitors for, you know, there's not, there's no competition within that market system. However, looking at it again, I would say this at least gives you a, you know, a quick temperature as maybe what the open market would bear, again. But like Marge said, St. Paul came back at thirty-five dollars, you know, they're significantly higher than that and they just bid out relatively recently too for organized collection. So, those numbers could come back, so I mean-
I believe Blaine is almost forty, isn't it?
Correct, but they were, you know, I looked specifically at Washington County cities that were under the same. I mean, again, it was more of a, let's kind of look at the comparatives that are relatively close to where we are. Roughly the same size. Thirty-two, I believe.
It's a town, it's a full township plus city.
Yeah, they're, they're similar in size, I mean, and again, there, I mean, this isn't, what's that? And I, and I realize that, and I realize that this is the problem you're trying to do, you know, this isn't necessarily as easy as walking into, you know, two different retail stores and saying, what are you currently-
None of these changed because they're just changing from one side to the other side with and without the rate increase. Just kind of to show you where we would be.
Yeah, sorry.
All the other numbers stayed the same because you didn't apply a rate increase.
No, I, I left the other ones, I just wanted to show where Forest Lake would, would show. So I mean, if you go down here to the current rate charts here, you'll see Forest Lake in yellow here.
Up one, up one more slide. Hope they stayed the same.
Yeah, so I, when I did the current rates with the rate increase, I just adjusted Forest Lake, which is why I highlighted there. I wanted to show what that- Yeah, I left everything else the same because I didn't, at this point, I don't, I don't know if they're going to have an increase or not. So I just looked at Forest Lake. Again, these are just first cut numbers, so I mean, I wouldn't get too married to them because there could be some, you know, changes in it. I just wanted to present the picture of open market, we're a little bit more in line with it. But when you look at the current other cities that are under, you know, organized collection, the rate increase does put us within, but it does not put us completely off that scale either, is the other way you could look at that increase too.
All right.
We also have an issue of the transportation distance. We are the furthest of all the communities from our, our ultimate dumping site. And I would also point out to you that Maronis and Jeans are small companies like us. And if you look at Walters and Waste Management and Republic and Ace, they are national companies. And if they take a loss in a market in order to get the business there, they can subsidize it from another community. Forest Lake sanitation is Forest Lake. We don't have the subsidy of fifty-five thousand or a million customers. We are a local business, I put money back into this community, not only in wages, but in buying goods and services from the fuel and the groceries and everything else that goes, goes into my business. I am local. And I'd like that support from the city.
Well, I definitely know you do a good job.
You have no complaints, except from the people who don't pay their bill.
You don't charge for, you know, extras if the lid is sitting up.
Sure we do.
Most of the other people do, things like that, so. I would, I would definitely like to see, see us stay with SRC. An RFP is a huge project. It's going to take several months to get through. This contract is, how many months left on it?
Eleven.
Eleven months left.
I'd like an extension too. As long as I'm here, I might as well ask for it.
So, you're asking, you know, so, four ninety-five a customer, four dollars ninety-five cents per customer averaged out, ordered the twenty-two to twenty-eight percent increase depending upon your container size. If we were to go that route and a one-year extension?
Love it.
Is that what you're asking, requesting?
Oh, give me five years. That's how long it takes me to pay for a three hundred thousand dollar truck.
No, I, I understand, I'm just trying to get a feel for the situation here. Do you foresee being satisfied at that point, one year out, with those increases alone? Or do you think it might be a losing battle for you?
Depending on what happens with the recycling. And I'm open to negotiation on that.
My concern, and I want to be fair, I yet to have a complaint to be honest about your service. To be fair, I think an, an RFP at the end of the contract might give you an opportunity to put in the language in a contract that would protect you from a situation like you're facing right now. So I'd be happy if we could find a short-term solution, but also find a solution that makes it easier for you to do business. I'd hate to see, you know, a market fluctuation put you out of business. And I don't want to have a fluctuating, you know, market for, or citizens to have rate hikes, you know, every six months or year because of a fluctuating market. So I don't know if there's a discussion we can have, you know, looking at the contract, maybe a short-term solution that works and a long-term solution.
How many of you got a phone call when their rates dropped three dollars a month? How many of your voters called to thank you for saving them measly three dollars a month? But it, to me, it meant fifteen thousand dollars a month. Do you realize how big of, of that is for a small company?
Now, you're talking about when the la, when this RFP started.
When the RFP started.
When your last contract started, you actually took a three dollar a month decrease.
Plus another three thousand dollars a month in score funds that the city withheld. It was enormous. I know you don't know my business, but we are fair, we are dependable, we are courteous. We serve this community in many volunteer ways.
I guess, the root of my question, is there anything else that you'd see that would be beneficial to protect you and the city from unforeseen hikes, maybe have a figured out, you know, percentage off tipping fees or percentage off of your recycling costs?
I think, or Marge can answer too, I guess.
I don't, I don't understand your question.
I, I think-
Remending the language of the contract, that would-
Well, I think where you're going with is- Well, I think where you're going with is a charge for service, but then the additional char, you know, the, the culmination of that would be service plus tipping fees plus recycling fees make up the contract. So if the tipping fees and recycling fees change, that can adjust the contract, not just the CPI per month.
Identifying trigger points.
Correct.
Mm-hmm. So I, I agree. I think that's going to be a much better way to...
Agree.
You know, it's, it's blind, you know, we have no idea what it's going to be.
None of us are buying recycled features.
But, yeah, like, and it was brought up before, I mean, we have a fifteen percent increase in sewer fees, that Met Council said, here you go. We have no discussion, we have nothing. It's just, next year they might do the same thing, and we have no control over that. We have a water rate study coming up, and we're going to have to change water rates. And yet, we can't say, well, no, we'll, we'll hold you to a contract because those costs are up. We, you know, it has to be passed along. And I, Marge, I've never received a complaint from anybody for service SRC's done.
Thank you.
And I don't know, forty, fifty years, how many years you've been here, but...
We bought it in eighty-five.
Okay.
Before that, we were in business from seventy-eight.
Okay, so quite a few years.
And we have two of the same employees that came with the company in nineteen eighty-five.
Someday you'll just load them up and recycle them.
That's terrible.
So...
Guys, we're talking about a cup of coffee a month.
Yeah.
Stop and think about it. A cup of coffee. You might stop at Starbucks and get one, one every day at that price.
The question I have is, because recyclables are obviously a problem now, they're not, what are they doing with them if there's no market for them?
Do you really want to know?
Yes, I do. I mean, if, if, why are we, I guess...
I am required by my contract to pick up one through seven plastic.
Right.
Okay, so I've got a man and a truck and a container out there.
Understand that, but...
Okay, out on the road.
There's not building warehouses to fill with recyclables.
And now I am hauling it down to Waste Management in Minneapolis. They are keeping the number one and the number two with the narrow-neck plastic, and all the rest of it is going to the Hennepin County Burner so that they can sell fuel to the city of Minneapolis to heat their buildings. They're burning it on my back because we're required to pick it up. I'm giving them free fuel and paying them to take it.
They're doing that with the paper and cardboard and stuff, too?
I wouldn't doubt it, but I don't, they're trying to recycle, I'm sure. You have human beings going across or standing, according to conveyors, going down the line trying to handpick the problems off. People think that all plastic is recycling. We're getting hoses and shovels and kids' toys and slip and slides and pool liners and bed liners from trucks and laundry baskets. They're not recyclable.
I, I recently had a call from the mayor of Fridley, and he was upset because he only missed a year.
This is Becky Alman, my office manager.
There's people listening at home, so we want to make sure we get you on the...
I, I got a call from the mayor of Fridley to, to talk about his problems with recycle because he owns a trailer park, I think out in Schaefer, and he has Waste Management. And he said not only did they increase his rates, both taxable and non-taxable portion of his bill, but they gave him a huge, what they called a recycling offset fee. And we all know why that all of a sudden showed up, but he was just going off the deep end, and that was much more than what she's asking for. And he was telling me what he knows about recycle and the city of Fridley even, and I just thought you should know that even Waste Management added this new charge out of the blue called a recycling offset fee. You know, so there are other garbage companies just going off the deep end trying to figure out what to do, you know? I know in the state of Indiana, the Waste Management actually sued the state and the city and the counties out there because they were having to take so much stuff that they couldn't actually recycle anywhere, and they had to eat that cost of garbage refuse, you know? So that's all I wanted to add.
Thank you.
We are no longer taking plastic as a recyclable up at SRC. When we get new customers in the North Branch area, we are telling them that ma, recycling is optional. I don't care if they throw it all in the garbage.
Yeah, my, my big concern is just to make sure that we're, everybody's on a level playing field and that we're being fair about the whole thing, and this is certainly going to be up for more discussion. It isn't, we're not making a, a decision tonight.
How long can you put me off, Sam? I need to bill, I need to bill the first of September.
It, it's only because you're not on, it wasn't part of the agenda.
It, it's going to come back on our next meeting.
It'll be on the next agenda, I'm sure.
We can't vote on it tonight because we didn't get the numbers from you till, was it just today?
Okay.
That's the reason.
So we got to have seventy-two hours or something before we can publish it, so it does have to come back.
I'll answer any questions you have in the meantime.
I do have one more question. If you can do that North Branch and make it at a consumer's discretion as to where they want to recycle, can you also, you said number one and number two plastics are recyclable? That's the only ones they want right now?
With a narrow neck.
With a narrow neck. Can you request that of your customers and have them throw anything else on the regular garbage? It's going there anyway.
We have. We've, we've created a new brochure that has gone out in our recycling, and it says number one and number two with a narrow neck.
Yeah, I think it has, I think everybody has one already.
Some pictures, yeah.
Recycling is, is a success, and that's, and it's killing itself. That's what's happening.
Yeah, I would...
The answer is don't let them put it in that package to start out with.
So, two, two comments. So one, I would discourage, recycling is a habit, that is a consumer habit that's incredibly hard to change, and we've made great strides in that. So although, yes, there's a disruption in the secondary market, I am nervous on doing anything that incents people to not recycle because, again, to reverse that behavior when the market turns around is difficult. That doesn't mean that you should be penalized from that, so let's do something to help you with that. I also feel like if we're going to put this on the agenda, we need to have something more concrete on what else do we need. I'm struggling with what that is, so...
Such as?
Yeah, that's, maybe I think what we need to identify is...
You already have the price comparisons, you know, we know there's tipping fee increases and that sort of thing. I, I, I've heard enough where I could certainly make a decision at the next meeting.
Yeah, and I, I, I guess, you know, taking into account that, you know, four or five years ago, there was, people were paying three dollars more. You know, yeah, I, I don't think there's going to be a huge uproar. People are going to understand there's a need for it. And we're looking at a short term to the end of this contract. I think an extension of the contract is due for other discussion. Let's see where things work out. But before we extend the contract, I think, you know, we can look at changes to that contract.
Yeah, I think...
There was bond in there versus insurance. I think we can get better breakdown of how that charge goes forward, and if we break out the tipping fees, if we break out the taxes and the other things, that way, when those change, when the items that are out of your control change, we can, we can justify those increases without making it look like, you know, it's, it's all happening at one time, so...
So you'd be looking for contract triggers in the future contract, and for now, we would be looking at some sort of a rate increase to get us until the end of the month.
I, I would say the urgent thing is getting, resolving the rate change. I, I think that's the urgent case here. And being fair with everybody in Forest Lake, if we don't do this, I think if we put it out for RFP right now, it's, it's a real poor time for it.
It's a separate issue.
And we're going to be paying a lot more that way. So number one, I would say, let's, let's get it on the agenda if, you know, I want everybody's input, but, you know, where that rate increase, if we need more information on that rate increase, Marge has a few days to present that to us. But then, I think we need to have some discussions with you on the contract and, you know, whether we're going to do the one-year renewal, what changes we need in that so that, you know, when the tipping fees go up, it's automatic. If they go down, you know, if recycling starts coming in, you know, it'll help offset it, you know? But that way, we got something that's more of a living contract that, that can go through those changes because we're dealing with just too many volatile items within there.
And I think, you know, just to kind of speak to the, the potential increase, in the, in the research that I did, you know, granted, the stories that I read on it, most of the residents that they polled when cities were going through this potential rate increase, most of them that were recycling were willing to pay additional. You know, I mean, I just want that to be clear, that it was within the market that when they would go out and poll residents, they said, we realize that it's an anomaly in the market at this point, and this was not predicted. And when they went out and spoke to them about, you know, what potential rate, because some of them were even seeing rate increases more significant than this, and they all said, you know, it's time to basically step up if we're going to, you know, encourage recycling, continue on the recycling path. One thing that would be possible would be to, as stated, would basically just do an amendment to this contract to adjust for the, for the one time, for the rate increase for the remainder of this contract. We'd want to memorialize that somewhat in an amendment to it, so we don't, the language is clear as to why there was a change, you know, so we're not kind of leaving that open to say, you know, for interpretation in the future. So if we go down six months, nine months from now, we can say, why did the rate go from X to Y? You know, at the end of seventeen, we can say, there's an amendment that is part of that contract. And then looking at, once that, if that's desire of the council, and the next side would be looking back and see if there's any other changes for a one-year extension or in the current extension, or do you want to go to RFP in the future? You know, is the other option that you could do because I think a lot of the changes that you're looking at, it may be easier to do a full RFP process at that point if you're putting all these other triggers and, you know, kind of going back in deep conversation pieces within the contract. It may be easier to do that within the context of a different RFP versus trying to go back into this in contract language, but we have to go back through and look at that, at this step, to kind of see what the best approach is there. But if you maybe decouple, decouple these two, it kind of takes some of, if, if the rate increase is allowed, then they can kind of continue to go on with the contracts, they're not constantly, you know, they're not losing money at this point, but then we could also go back through and view the contract without having that pressure of, of a company that's losing money at the, at that time.
Makes sense.
I'd like the courtesy of negotiating my contract ahead of time as provided for in my former contract before you go out for RFP behind my back and throw me into the negotiation process. And that's what happened with the former administrator.
We'd have to look at the current contract that's there. I mean, that's, that's, that's what's on the table at this point. That's the signed agreement at this point, so that's what we'd be working off of as the current contract at this point.
And the decision for us to go to RFP is a public decision made by council that you, there will be broad visibility to that process.
Yeah, there has to be.
Right, there's, that is a council decision, so you will...
That wasn't last time.
Yeah, last time it wasn't.
It was not.
That's too bad.
I won't make that commitment that it's a public, hm? That it will be a public process.
No. Don't negotiate something after the fact.
So any other questions for Marge, or I think we've got enough to work with for our next meeting then?
Thank you.
All right, have a good night. All right, Donovan, Headwaters Place, final plat, final PUD.
Yes, sir. Bailey, can I get some video? Mayor, members of council, I'd like to present the final PUD, final plat application for Headwaters Place. I have to admit that the agenda item was incorrect. I'd submitted to Bailey before we realized that we couldn't do the easement vacation now because of public notification time period, and so that'll come on the August twenty-seventh, City Council agenda. But before you is, is the plat shown here. As you probably recall, this is the thirty twin-home development proposed by Pratt Homes with Len Pratt here to represent the project and Mr. Dave Hempel from Westwood. And this came before the, for, receive preliminary, PUD preliminary plat approval by council. And these, this preliminary, the final plat is substantially the same as the preliminary plat, and there are a couple of resolution numbers in your packet provided by the city attorney that staff recommends that you adopt to formally approve the final PUD and final plat for Headwaters Place. At this time, I'd like to take any questions from the council.
So are these all individual, one-level townhomes then?
Correct. What's submitted showed the basic single-level homes, you know, twin homes, front-loaded garages, and, you know, so they show basically what, you know, they, at this point plan, and this was, you know, incorporates part of the, the PUD book that this would be substantially what would be built there.
And this is all senior housing?
It's not designated senior, though I believe that might be the market that they're going for with the single level, but that there's no, to my knowledge, no restriction on age.
Any questions, Sean?
I have just a quick process question. So Donovan, tonight you're looking for approval of two resolutions. One is on page, is it twelve of our packet, zero-eight thirteen eighteen oh-two? Is that the first one?
Um, the oh-one would be the first one because that's the, the, I'll show it, bring it up on screen.
Oh, here we go. Thank you.
Because that represents the, the plat appro, well, I'm sorry, oh-two is the plat approval, either one, but formerly, if you did the plat approval first...
Yep.
That cements it, then the PUD amendment is something more, you know, more, more detailed.
So can you scroll back to the whole, whole plat once?
Sure.
Or, yeah, other direction. I guess, question, is there a sidewalk?
There is a ten-foot trail on, because it's on this side of the road, this is actually north is to our left, so on the, on the east side of the road, there's a ten-foot trail. And it's part of the develop, actually, part of the original Headwaters PUD approval, this trail is planned to be built all the way to Fenwick Fields. There's some final details on the actual trail alignment, but the city has held money in escrow for the, for the construction of this since two thousand and six.
And to that point, there was a mention in the packet about Parks, Lakes and Trails consideration. Are they final, or is there still some decisions to be made on what's going to happen with trail alignment?
The, currently, there is a, a wetland, protected wetland on that north end, and when staff and the developer, the project team and members of the Parks, Lakes and Trails Commission walk this alignment, really thought a great solution was to, you know, basically have, it starts somewhere around here, this is the airport, and then here's the old two-hundred street vacated road. Basically, the, the trail would start here and then basically hug this tree line here and, you know, going somewhat in a northwestern direction. But however, at this point, we've then since found out that there's a buffer area that's part of this, this clearing, which is, it's a, right now, it's an informal trail. It's really, it's a nice place to put a trail. And so I think the final resolution would be, it'll encroach upon this slightly, or else perhaps go a little bit into the trees. Dave, is there any more update on that one, perhaps? This is Dave Hempel, project engineer.
I know a lot of people like to walk their dogs out right in that area, too. Thank you, Donovan. David Hempel, Westwood Professional Services. We recently had the wetland easement staked, and it does meander in and out of the trees. Most of the way, there's enough room to fit the trail in, but there's a couple of small areas where we'll have to remove probably ten feet of trees from that edge to stay out of the easement. Easement is a WACA or the Wetland Conservation Act easement, so it's not simple vacation. There's multi-levels of bureaucracy to go through to get a variance from that or adjust the boundary. So we're thinking from a timeline perspective that be quickest and easiest and achieve the same results, basically removing some of the trees on the edge of that open area to make the trail fit and proceed with, with, in that fashion.
Thank you.
I've got one question for Dave Adams. The road that goes in there kind of curves back and forth, any problem with plowing? I mean, would you rather see a straight road going into it, or?
I had two questions regards to the trail. Number one, Dave probably appreciate this, too. Make sure there's no light poles, mailboxes, anything such as that within the trail, if that trail is going to be tight to the curb or within two feet. Something I'd like to see, I don't know if Ryan, you already had worked that in on, on some of the designs that you were looking at.
So the mailbox location will be determined by the post office. I believe they're going to have community mailboxes, correct me if I'm wrong. One thing that's been in discussion between the fire department and, I guess, Donovan and myself is we currently have fire hydrants on the other side of the road because of the trail. So potentially they're moved to the back side of the trail. I don't know where you two are at in that conversation, so we have accounted for that. The street lighting will have to go on the south side of the road as well. But that'll come, that comes later, once the plat's approved. And then the developer will submit that stuff to the private utilities, which then will design for what's needed for lighting and stuff like that here. So we'll still have that opportunity to see those, that design, streetlight locations, so.
Perfect, thank you.
Is there suitable room for snow plowing in the cul-de-sac?
Never is.
Snow placement, I guess, you know, are we going to push the snow?
You have to find a cul-de-sac that will easily plow.
Every cul-de-sac is a problem. Yeah, but that's, right.
You know, as you're going down the one side and pushing it all in there.
Maybe global warming won't get as much snow.
It's always been one very angry person, probably Lot fourteen.
How do we plow that for these flats down?
Just push it right to the end.
What's there, are there trees?
It's just how it goes.
No, it's like a future parking lot, something like that.
That's kind of the idea, they could extend that.
They put a hammerhead or something that they add to there. All right, well, it's been, it's been very good to work with you, Mr. Pratt, on this project. We see a lot of, a lot of changes over the initial one that came in, I think there's a lot of positive changes here, so definitely.
Mayor, members of the council, it is my pleasure to be here tonight, you know. I can honestly tell you that, you know, what we do here is just one of the things. There, there are regu- regulations that go on and on and on, and we're finally, David, almost, we're there. You know, Rice Creek and the Army Corps of Engineers, can you believe that? And we're now asking for your approval of this, and that'll help us get started. We're out of time now, September, you know, can you believe what happened to us in the, in the summer? And the reality of all this is that we're not going to be able to probably finish it all. We're going to have to concentrate, reality is on, on kind of phasing this. Because if you put your calendar out, you'll see that in sixty days where we're going to be is weather-related, you know. And so with your approval tonight, I can get started. And I'm going to ask for flexibility with staff as we now get our constructions, meetings going and all that. You know, the common bond site is here, the apartment site.
It's Outlet B.
Yeah.
Outlet C is now a pond, correct?
Yes. In wetland, and if you can kind of imagine here, maybe, I'm going to write about those first six lots there, the townhome lots, right there. Count six lots. And draw a line right there. That would enable us in scheduling to get that road in, you know, before, if the weather's good, you know, we, we'll just keep going. But I've got to be able to be realistic here, you know, knowing the timing, is in our construction phasing, is just to maybe make two phases here, here, because of the reality of the winter.
Well, you can work that out with staff.
Yeah.
I think for tonight, we're just, we'll look to.
Yeah, I appreciate that, but I thought I'd get that.
Marge, did you have a question?
And there's one more piece, Donovan, at the very beginning, you said there's one piece that's coming on the twenty-seventh. What is that, is that the conveyance?
So, it's the easement vacation. When the original Headwaters PUD was adopted, there was some drainage and flowage easements located in order, because the way the property was originally graded to make sure that there weren't flooding issues. And now since that the, you know, there will be city water and sewer, I'm sorry, city storm sewer installed, those are no longer needed.
So how many motions are we looking for here, three?
Two for sure.
I'll kick us off with a motion to approve Resolution zero eight thirteen eighteen oh one, which is resolution to approve the final plat for Headwaters Place.
I'll second the motion.
All right, we have a motion and a second, any further discussion? Hearing none, or?
Just if we could add maybe a friendly amendment to be able to work with staff on phasing the project?
And friendly amendment to instruct staff to work with the developer on phasing of the project?
All right.
Any object, before I say that, Donovan, any objections or Bridget, Dan, any concerns of?
Like, like, some language like that could be incorporated in the development agreement, which is still not finalized.
So not, so phasing's not necessary at this point, is that what I'm hearing?
And I, I mean, council, it's nice, I'm sorry, Bridget.
No, go ahead.
At this point, you know, that language is helpful, but this is, it's commonly, it's a common occurrence where staff does work with the development team to, you know, work with scheduling and I believe as long as the city.
Well, I mean, they're looking to sell the first six lots. As long as the road is built there, my only concern would be is, at what stage common bond would be, too, because, you know, I don't want those people in there and, you know, having them digging up the road and doing other things, so.
That's why I'm concentrating on that first segment of it, so that we can stabilize things. And if I can do that, I can get it done. And that's why I appreciate the flexibility on phasing, it's just simply a matter of timing, weather, weather-related. And kind of, we'll work with Donovan on it, and that would be great to have that flexibility.
All right.
I'll, I'll leave amendment.
Do you?
So I don't know if Ryan has anything to add, so I'm not sure of this flexibility of phasing, what specifically the request is. I would note two things before I kick it off to Ryan, that number one, the drainage and utility easement vacation will come before council on the twenty-seventh. The second piece is there is that land exchange agreement, which the council approved back in May. So the goal, I hope, is to try and close on that yet this week, if possible, because I know you need that. So I've, I've been working with the attorney over at Kennedy and Grave, and I'm trying to line everything up. But there are a lot of moving pieces with all of these different approvals, and perhaps Ryan can speak to what the requested phasing flexibility language is.
From our perspective of utilities, the phasing proposed here has no implications on the final project. Sewing water have to come from Forest Road anyway, so we'll be working from the road, working out of, you know, away from this area. Storm sewer, you basically got a low point at where it says Outlet C on your projection screen right now. So all the storm sewer will be coming that way anyways, the grading will be done. Obviously, the developer will have to have temporary restoration in, and we'll have their weekly site inspections performed by Rice Creek Watershed District for erosion and sediment control compliance and stuff like that. And Westwood also is in charge of the SWIP inspections on your Headwaters developments, and we get very good detailed reports from those inspections. So I'm not concerned at all with erosion, with Dave Hempel leading the same process on this side. So if we stop at that area, if the weather's bad, it's what it is, we'll just pick up and go, it has no implication on.
All right.
Next.
It also had a temporary turnaround if needed, whoever.
I would prefer to not amend the resolution to include, language like flexibility on timing is incredibly soft, and we've got very specific language, it sounds like you have that flexibility anyway. So I would prefer that we pass the resolution as stated.
I agree.
You have the second, is that okay with you?
That is all right with me.
Any further discussion? I'll, or Ed, go ahead.
There's one question, as far as the, in the phasing project, it gets delayed. Is there any problem with timeline on permits or any of that? I mean, I don't want to put them behind the eight ball, and say, oh, your permit's expired, now we start again.
I think after a year, they have to renew them and buy a new permit, but.
I don't want to put them through that, if you don't have to.
I appreciate it, it's a pretty simple process, so.
Yeah, if you guys aren't concerned about it. All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed.
Well, we got to go on to the second portion of that.
My please, yeah. One twelve, eight thirteen eighteen dash two.
All right, we'll look for a motion for that as well.
I'll make a motion, we approve Resolution zero eight thirteen eighteen zero two.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second on the resolution. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right.
Yeah, thank you.
Take care. Uh, seven C. Rating improvement on Imperial Avenue. Donovan, you had a change to that, or a couple of technical changes on that one?
Correct, as a consent agenda item, that's simply there to get authorized city signatures on a development agreement that, for project, agreeing permit that was approved by the planning commission. It was submitted as part of the packet. Upon further review by the city attorney, there are a few changes clarifying terms, for instance, where I, where I'd written street, Bridget, you know, added Imperial Avenue. Also puts stronger language as far as if there was a default, that the escrow could go toward recouping city costs. Very minor technical changes, however, but it's, and the paper version at your desk is the correct version that, like, city authorization, you know, basically, you know, city approval of to authorize those city signatures on that agreement.
All right, so we'll look for a discussion on this, if not, a motion for the updated version.
Or nothing. I, I'd make a motion that we, that we accept the improvement agreement with the, with the upgraded, or updated amendments to it.
All right. Do we have a second on that one?
A second.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. And water rate study.
Mayor, members of the council, we have before you tonight is a couple of options for a water rate study. During the twenty seventeen fiscal year audit, the auditors may have mentioned that, and you have to apologize, a really bad pun I'm about to make here, but the water fund is basically just treading water in terms of like where we are with our rate structure. We're able to cover our current liabilities, but we're not really building any capital up for future expenses. And when you look at the, the CIP from twenty eighteen to twenty twenty-four, there's some pretty significant future expenses that the water system is facing. I, I did just some quick math from twenty eighteen to twenty twenty-three, you're looking at approximately fifteen and a half million dollars worth of improvements that are needed. Granted, we could potentially shift those around a little bit in there to kind of, you know, expand it out, but it's just kind of showing the fact that we do have some pretty significant expenses that that fund is going to see over the next five or six years. So part of what we're proposing is basically doing a rate study to make sure that we start, that our water rates are able to support that, those future investments that we need within the system. So what the, the companies will do is they'll go look at our current, what currently you are charging for water rates. They'll look at what our current maintenance costs are, what our future improvement costs are, and then develop models in terms of what our rates need to be to cover those costs. So there's multiple options in terms of like how you fund those big purchases, you can bond for them, you can, you know, kind of do a pay-as-you-go type system. But all those would require at some point some rate adjustment in terms of us being able to have the capital available to do these system-needed improvements. There is some debt that's going to fall off at some point, and they'll look at that as well to say, what is the impact that when the current debt that's on the system falls off, how does that impact rates? So they do a pretty exhaustive study in terms of, you know, current rates and future rates. And they basically set you up with a rate schedule that says, if you increase your rates by X percentage, this will allow you to fund this number of improvements, if you increase it by this higher percentage, it'll let you do this level of improvements, or if you desire bonding as a part of it, that's what you can account for your bonding payment. So basically, it's a pretty detailed analysis, so there actually is math behind the rate structure that we're using for water. It should also take into account for future growth within the system. So if we're looking at building on additional residents that are consuming water, that'll be factored in as well. So it's a really good, just thorough study to make sure that our rates are current with current needs and future needs. And again, the auditors, when we kind of had the conversation with them, they said, you know, your water fund is, it's, it's okay as is right now, we're not losing money on it, which is a good thing, they said, however, it's not positioned well if we need to do future improvements down the road. And the best way to get that number so it's in line with what we need down the road is to do a rate study. So what we did was we reached out to AEM, which is the company that currently is doing the contract financial services for the city of Forest. They came back with an estimate of twelve thousand dollars for a rate study for the water fund. I also reached out to Springstead, who also does rate analysis work. They came back with a rate of sixty-five hundred dollars for just a rate analysis study. And if you want to look at what our water access charges were as a part of that as well, they'd be an additional eight hundred and fifty. Just also want to point out that the Springstead study, if there's any additional out-of-pocket expense that the company encouraged during the cost of the analysis, such as copying or any travel up to meeting, there would be some nominal additional costs associated with that, versus the AEM was a total twelve thousand dollars that encompassed everything. However, I would not anticipate a lot of copying costs, a lot of this will be done electronically, and then minimal travel here, probably just for one meeting for a presentation. The goal of this would be, if authorized to do a rate study, would bring it back as part of the conversation we'll have on the enterprise funds later in October of this year. Both of these have it on track, where they could get this rate studies done within six to eight weeks, which puts us in time. We'll, we'll have the analysis work done by October, so it can be brought up as part of the analysis. We'll look at those two enterprise funds later in the year. With that, I'd be happy to answer any questions as to either the, the CIP projects that are included in the, in the adjustment or what the rate study would entail.
We'll open it up for discussion. I guess personally, I don't see spending the money for the study. I mean, we need to raise rates, but I'd like to do it staged. I mean, I'd like to see smaller, you know, or measured increase fairly soon, and then, you know, city can delve into where those replacements and things are happening. But it's important to start building some fund in that water fund so that we can, you know, replace some of the treatment systems we have, replace or build a new tower or a new well as they're going in. Obviously, those big expenditures are something that may need to be bonded for if we're not planning far enough ahead. But it's all factored on projected growth. We did that before, and the growth didn't happen. So a lot of, a lot of infrastructure sat there waiting. We're kind of getting at that point now where we do have to expand some more infrastructure as well. I just don't know if we really need to spend this much money on a study, or if we should just say, hey, you know, put five percent on water and see where, how much funding we're getting. I mean, we can extrapolate that out fairly quick. We, we know what's in the CIP right now, just, you know, how do you get from point A to point B? And I think we need to do it in steps.
All right, accounting staff, have any rough figures on how to work this one out?
I mean, I haven't gone through, you know, we haven't done through like the analysis work, and there, that is an option. You could just do a, a straight across the board, throw five percent at it and see where we land on that and get a ballpark estimate. I think, given the scope of what the requirements are in CIP, you would want to put a little bit more analysis work behind it in terms of like making sure that if we have a policy where we want to pay eighty percent of that with, you know, cash and only bond for twenty percent of that, or vice versa.
I guess I'd like to pay a hundred percent, you know, I, I mean, we should be at that point, anyway.
But then i- if you do that, I mean, I would probably anticipate, if you're looking at fifteen and a half million dollars over the next six years, you're probably looking at having to do a sizable increase over five percent, because the fund balances is not, I mean, there's some fund balance there, but it's probably not robust enough to handle that level of investment. And the end result is if you put, you know, say you do the Springstead study at sixty-five hundred, if you're able to get your rates adjusted over the course of the years to prevent bonding, you're going to save that money multiple times over a lack of interest having to be paid on the bonding. The other thing is if you just do, say, a five percent or six percent, or kind of do that ballpark math towards it, and you miss the ballpark, you're going to have to do a pretty big correction, at least this way. Granted that you are kind of building in some projected growth on there, but I think the lesson in this time is that you can maybe meter that.
Granted, that you are kind of building in some projected growth on there, but I think the lesson in this time is that you can maybe meter that back a little bit and say, do a concerted growth estimate, you know, what does that kind of allow us to do? And I, and I think that's the modeling that they'll do, is you can say, what are the scenarios, you know, and then we can kind of maybe look at what we get back from scenarios. However, you could, you know, as you say, you could do a five percent and just see where it is. However, I think if you really want to drill that down, you know, it's worth an investment to get that, those, those models and those spreadsheets developed.
How much revenue do we get a year from water fund?
Dave, do you know off the top of your head?
None at all.
But I mean, I, any idea, I mean, are we at two million, three million in water sales?
Better than two million, I believe.
Sewer separate.
With what we cut down in operations, I don't know. Set the loose, how about, we're going back for the, the spend every time that we have budget for operations.
Question for Dave. Do we have a adequate meter program?
Right now, we replace them after they go.
A little more insight, as they go bad, you replace them? How old's our oldest meter, any idea on that?
Two thousand ninety-nine, Canada, census field census meters, no resolution in Neptune.
There's nothing ancient that's hurting us.
No, but they're falling off. About two hundred quarter, hundred fifty, two hundred meters quarter.
I'd like to do an adequate study, but incorporate, um, a meter program into that. Uh, water meters are essentially your cash register when it comes to what you're billing, the older they get, the less accurate they are. Penny's the homeowner, but collectively, um, that's, that's money you're losing that you're not billing for the water that's going out. If you think that's a good idea, I'd like to try and incorporate a meter program into the studies to make sure that we're gonna be watching it as we go down the road, make sure that our rates don't drop off, just due to lost revenue.
Yeah, we're, we're looking for a, it's not inaccurate meters.
So, I'd, I'd like to factor that in to the study. Um, account for
Good idea.
An aggressive meter program, just to make sure.
Dan, there's quite a, maybe it's, I don't know if it's a Dan or Dave question, there's quite a difference between the two firms and price, and I, I appreciate, one is perhaps absent some costs. I also noticed that there wasn't a staff recommendation, is there one that is the preferred route, or is it really, are we gonna get the same value out of either one?
I mean, I think both will provide, you know, a good rate, ready to.
As I just read through the proposals, I think your hire proposal is both proposing to evaluate your wastewater and your water operation.
Oh, I didn't see that.
So, that's probably the difference, they're looking at two utilities versus the other ones looking at one in their proposal.
Just twice the price.
So, maybe they want to modify that to.
Do we need a wastewater evaluation at this point?
No, we looked at that one, that was, the auditor looked back at that one and said, that one actually is much better.
Yeah.
You know, that one, he said, is actually, you know, you're seeing your fund balance through this, and it doesn't have the requirement of investments on that one.
No, we're stuck with it.
I believe we went through that last year when we were back in the moment, um, bonding for the stations, and if we follow, I can't remember exactly what that rate structure was off the top of my head, but if we were to follow that, then we should have cash in hand for that second phase of the station, as long as we, you know, come for that, that council increases, but, you know, continue to vary. It should, should fund that next one, go ahead. I just can't remember off the top of my head what that, that structure was, if that was kind of figured out.
And just in terms of, you know, with AEM versus Springstead, I mean, AEM does offer a little bit of, they're already familiar with our books, you know, so I think there's a little bit more of, it's easier, the staffing already knows our system, they've already had kind of more of the experience there, so I think there'd be less. Once we, you know, access some information, once they kind of get it, they already know where to do, you know, the backend is already built in there. Springstead may require a little bit more, you know, handling this in terms of getting the information, however, I think on a product perspective, I think they both are gonna provide a quality product.
Could we send this back to them, include a meter program, and specifically water? Where's the time, time of the essence on this?
I mean, I think we have time, if we're looking at September, October, if they're looking at two months worth of.
The rate rates would increase to the first of the year anyway, I would assume, you know.
It would just, the only thing I would potentially do is instead of having that rate discussion in early October, end of October, just push it back, which again, as long as you're by the end of the year, we're okay, so we have plenty of time on the backend, so if you want me to go back to AEM, I can ask them for just a confirmation on the, on the bid, and then bring this back forward.
How many people, uh, how many staff members are we billing to water department?
Two.
Just two? Okay, so that's pretty reasonable too.
And, uh, I think one more.
All right, but, yeah, that's pretty reasonable in there.
I, I mean, we're, we're using these numbers to make some pretty big decisions on debt versus pay as you go, future discussions, I think it's worth, you know, especially if the number comes in closer to the sixty five hundred dollar range, I think it's information worthwhile, especially if we're using it to drive some rate increases. I would appreciate having the benefit of that analysis, I can also appreciate the, you know, let's just throw five percent at it, but, um, if we can get the price down, I think it's well worth it.
I can, I can definitely get contact classification, all right.
Okay.
And as far as meters, any, what, what specifically you're looking for?
Just make sure they take into account, um, uh, whether we're gonna be turning over those meters on a, a set basis, figure out where do we start to lose those accuracies, that way we can keep.
And build it into the, kind of the depreciation of updating those meters on a, on a fixed basis.
Correct, they're not cheap, so make sure that's factored into our, our spending. Don't end up in the situation again, more or less.
Yeah, so right now, we budget annually for a hundred thousand dollars per year replacement. That's like a schedule that'll get you, uh, excellent years. Now, is that the option of? We, we went to Neptune and said, what will it cost to switch everything over to Neptune and do AMI, you know, propagation study, all that, and I think, well, you can pay everything, and then, ten years old. You know, if you're to do that, then you could keep that hundred thousand and then keep rotating, or you could decide whether or not you just want to go over fifteen years and do a complete swap. Issue and prepare that you're gonna have, you know, if you're gonna have to do three hundred years, so like, you have all the ones, so I guess your question, if you want to do all the years or switch all the ones?
That's something I'd like to get your opinion on, you're the one who's gonna be orchestrating that, um, I just want to make sure that we're taking that expense into account, and that we're looking at hitting it where it fits us accurately. Maybe our hundred thousand dollars a year, like you said, is, is, is adequate, maybe it's aggressive, maybe it's behind, I don't know that yet. I'd like them to take a look at that and see if we are doing what we should be as far as hitting that sweet spot. So, I just would like that included in the, the analysis.
Absolutely, we can add that in as part of the CIP plan, that goes in as, we'll, we'll add a meter rate analysis as an expense that comes forward on that, so, get that included.
So, um, send this back to get an updated proposal and bring it back next week?
Yep.
All right. Brian, you wanna take us through the twenty eighteen routes, route and seal project?
Sure, mayor, city council in front of you is, uh, quotes, uh, results that we've obtained for, uh, two thousand eighteen route and seal project. Beginning of the year, we weren't gonna do this project quite yet, could not thinking we would have the funds. Uh, all our maintenance projects within that fund have been, um, ninety-nine percent completed, and we're under budget. Still wanted to keep some reserves within that fund, just in case something pops up and Public Works has to do some more emergency repairs between now and next, next budget cycle. So, we were estimating to go out for quotes and, uh, get quotes around forty thousand, but definitely got low quote at thirty one thousand. Uh, I've got a map and location of the roads that we would do the route and seal on, so some of these roads were just paved in two thousand fourteen, so we'll be able to get, and then, uh, is early as this last year, so we'll be able to get in the cracks there and fill them up here, uh, on the map, so it's our recommendation to, uh, award the quote to the Low Quote Quarter Asphalt Surface Technologies Corporation in the amount of thirty one thousand dollars, and this work will be completed before, at the end of the summer, so.
So, this is just routing out the cracks and putting seal in the cracks, it's not seal coating the whole road?
No, we'll have a seal coating project in nineteen, though.
Okay. Look for a motion if we don't have any other discussion?
I'd make a motion that we move ahead with this, uh, two thousand eighteen route and seal quote that Ryan presented. I think it's a darn good price, I'm just covering a big area.
Your motion would be to accept bid number one?
Yes, the thirty one thousand.
Quote number one.
Quote number one, yeah.
Do you have a second?
I'll second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. All right, um, building department update, Chief Newman.
Mayor, members of the council, in front of you, in front of you, you have the, uh, report for the first six months of twenty eighteen in a comparison to the first six months of twenty seventeen. And as you can see, that we've had a continued, uh, growth in the building department. For the first six months of twenty eighteen, we saw a fifty-two percent increase in, in, uh, permits issued. Uh, we seen a fifteen percent decrease in, uh, inspections, and a fifty-eight percent increase in plan reviews. Now, the decrease in inspections for the first six months was due to, uh, uh, rescheduling siding and re-roofs to the second half of twenty eighteen. With the, uh, employee in, uh, building that was on leave, uh, we brought in Minspec to perform inspections and, uh, focus them mostly on, on non-re-roof and siding inspections, and that's what the decrease was for the first six months. So, we expect to see that increase for the second half of twenty eighteen.
I, um, asked Dan earlier, and the only thing I don't understand on plan reviews, a fifty-eight percent increase, but where does that sixty-seven, one oh six, I, I can't get that from the numbers above. What pla, you know, the, so like, last year, there was sixty-seven plan reviews, but I'm looking at new residential is twenty-five, new commercials four, other commercials sixty-five, I mean, nothing adds up to sixty-seven, so I was just wondering where that number is.
Well, plan reviews will be done for decks, uh, and remodels, and so when you look at, uh, other residential, included in that are, uh, uh, decks and, uh, remodels of, uh, single family dwellings, and so that will require a plan review for, uh, anytime you remodel a garage or you add on to an existing home, uh, that, depending on what the, uh, request is, it may require a plan review.
But obviously, new construction, there's a plan review as well, right?
Correct.
Okay.
But there's out, there can be a lag in time, so a plan review may be done in twenty seventeen, but the actual permit or fees aren't paid till eighteen.
Okay, all right.
And so the numbers may not always line up in that same quarter.
But if you, uh, permits that don't require a plan review too, like a roofing, re-roof or something like that?
Yeah, roofing, uh, re-siding doesn't require a plan reviews.
All right, any other questions for the chief? Thank you for the update.
Yeah, thanks.
All right. Item G, Ace Hardware invoices.
Make a motion, we pay the Ace Hardware invoices?
Yeah, I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Hall of Spain.
All right. And wind supply invoices.
I'll make a motion, we pay the wind supply invoices.
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And what up, Stan is there? Takes us to staff updates. We'll start with you, Dave.
I have nothing tonight, I guess you guys have something for me?
Nope. All right, Donovan?
I have nothing, for me, sir.
And Chief Newman?
Last Thursday, we had a joint fire board meeting, and we did not have a quorum at that meeting, so, uh, tentatively, we have one scheduled for August thirtieth that we're going to try to reschedule for August twenty-third. And, uh, out back, if you've driven out back, you see that we've got the Linwood tanker, um, we took delivery of that, uh, two weeks ago, and once we get some, uh, training on it for driving, then we'll get that into service as a temporary, uh, tender to hold this over until we make a plan for which direction we're gonna go with replacing, uh, tender one.
Do you have an estimated date for in-service at this point? Do you have an estimated date for in-service at this point?
I'd say within thirty days. That's all I have.
Thank you. Any other questions?
Chief Peterson? Uh, Mr. Mayor and City Council members, the only item I have for you is on August seventh, the community joined in on the National Night to Unite event. We had twenty-eight block parties, um, throughout the community, and also, uh, presence at the Lakeside Memorial Park, uh, along with the Arts in the Park. And we had, um, police fire, uh, some staff members, Bailey being one of them, and, uh, some Washington County Attorney's staff that came out and joined us at a bunch of the block parties, and it was a, a great event, and it was good to see everybody out there.
All right. And any questions for the chief? All right. Bailey?
Uh, I'll just add, I had a really great time on the, you know, Night to Unite, um, I rode around with Officer Bruce Peterson, and got to see a lot of the block parties and, um, talk with community members, and it was just really fun, there was a lot of cool donations from local businesses and really entertaining.
All right, thank you. And Dan?
Uh, just a quick update, uh, due to the tomorrow's primary election, we had to reschedule the finance committee meeting, uh, there's a state law, you can't have a meeting between six and eight, that was an oversight on my part, uh, so we actually moved that to four thirty PM, so we're not in conflict with that state law, so the finance committee meeting that was originally scheduled for six thirty tomorrow has been rescheduled to four thirty, so we'll be adjourned by the time that six o'clock curfew hits.
Any questions for Dan? I hope the finance committee doesn't go till six. Uh, Bridget?
Thank you, honor, no update from me.
And Ryan?
Mayor City Council, obviously, things are very busy with construction right now, if you look at the consent agenda with the number of contractors' requests for payments, so things continue to move forward, uh, obviously, with the plot approval tonight, another project will continue to move forward. So, very busy out there and a lot of things going on, uh, and then, along just with the local things and private improvements, you know, got a lot of things going on with MinDOT too. A few weeks ago, I know there was another unfortunate situation at the intersection of North Shore Trail and Highway ninety-seven, um, but good news, I guess, to follow, uh, last couple of months, Dan and I have been talking with MinDots, uh, we are anticipating potentially a project in two thousand twenty funded by MinDOT that would include a left turn lane. I know MinDOT has probably corresponded to twenty residents, they've copied us on those emails, so we're able to see the dialogue that's going and the concerns that are growing in that area. So, there's some momentum there, and, you know, so hopefully that does get done, and, um, safety is improved at the intersection, so we'll continue to move forward on that and try to help MinDOT with whatever information they need moving forward.
Something council could do to, is there anything council can do to help that?
Right now, they're, they're pretty deep scoped in the project, uh, so they're kind of found that, uh, that this project does not even miss book consent, but, uh, if you wanted to pass a resolution to support for the project, that would certainly help that, and in the event funding becomes tight between amongst other projects, if you have local support, those always, uh, rise to the top, so that's something to consider, we can bring up later. I'm just kind of talking about, back to the water questions that we've had here, you know, in two thousand fourteen, the city completed a water study at that time, it was certainly clear what the needs were at that time, but since the completion of that study, you've had six apartment buildings. You've had Chestnut Creek Phase One, Headwater Seventh, Eighth, Ninth, Tenth, and now Eleventh Edition, several school improvements and expansions, you got two more apartments on the way in Chestnut Creek Phase Two, so just think of all the demand that's been put on your water supply, but there's still a lot of things we can do locally, uh, especially when you look at your June, July, and August water usage, which spikes compared to their other months, certainly, we can educate our neighbors who are irrigating or have their irrigation set on timers, and don't have moisture controllers and stuff like that, so really, you shouldn't have to water like what you see or might see a neighbor doing, so I take this as an educational moment to inform your neighbor on, turn it on when it hasn't rained for three days, just leave your controller off and turn it on. You don't need to be watering every day like some of this stuff is, or might have rained in the nights, but, well, your controller's set for six AM, so it comes on, right, so that's. So, that's, that's the stuff we see, and that's the stuff that's going to cost you money. Until we control that June, July, and August usage, you're going to continue to have these battles on how to fight fire flow in those months. And to make sure your insurance and all that other stuff's in place, you're going to have to invest in infrastructure unless you can lower that usage in those months. And we don't have to design for three months out of the year. You know, things that the city has done is the Water Efficiency Grant Program, that went very well. And we're always trying to advocate for things like that with our legislation to put money for, to those items and stuff like that'll enhance or reduce our water usage. So, that's just things to keep in mind, there's easy things that we can do as a community together to lower our taxable situation. So, just keep that in mind, and if you can have those conversations with any of those neighbors, that'd be appreciated. That's all I got.
Thank you. Uh, Dan, do you know if we have the ability to bill at different rates for water?
We already have a tiered structure.
But per, like, per user? You know, if somebody's only using ten thousand gallons of water, but then somebody else is, you know, with a...
Like a tier.
Using forty or fifty thousand gallons in a house, that, you know, maybe that, you know...
Penalty payment.
Yeah, that first ten thousand gets billed at X amount, and, you know, ten to twenty-five thousand gets billed at a couple cents higher, and over, over gets billed at maybe a couple cents more than that to kind of promote conservation and, you know, through something like that. But I don't know if we have the ability to do that.
I believe we do have a currently tiered structure. I'd have to go back and look at it, Ryan, just tell me if we have three tiers in there.
And is that, maybe that should be part of the study too?
Yeah, that would be, yep.
Are those tiers set at the right?
Yeah, I think it's a full, it's the full analysis that would be performed, all the tiers and everything would be on the table.
Okay.
There a difference in commercial rate versus residential and water? It'd be... I believe so.
Yeah, I believe there is.
All right. Sam.
I just have one more quick before September goes forward here. Just on Second Avenue, we're currently soliciting quotes for the cleanup work out there. We're still evaluating the scope of what needs to be done on Second Avenue to get that road reconstructed. So, at this point, we're still waiting back for quotes to do some initial pile moving out of there. And once we get those quotes back, we'll kind of reevaluate the game plan and get that work scoped out. But that is in process at this point, we are moving forward with it. We just don't have any definitive game plan because we're still waiting for the results of the study to be performed on this, so we can scope out what we're actually looking at on Second Avenue at this point.
You think we might have asphalt yet before it gets froze?
My fingers are crossed. I believe we will be, I will be, I believe we'll be able to do that.
All right.
Oh, Sam.
I attended the last school board meeting last Thursday, and nothing real earth-shattering there. Just updates on what's going on with the buildings and that sort of thing, is, you know, with the building remodels and so forth. And could be good news there, they've been under budget and on time, and so those are moving along. Otherwise, it was normal business, paying the bills and that sort of thing, so that's all I have, thanks.
I believe my last official thing with was August, or maybe with the airport. They're bringing, they're going to be bringing, I think, three things to the council. One is lighting of the high voltage lines as you make the, one of the approaches over sixty-one. And that'll be a ninety percent project funded by MinDOT Aviation. Then the second thing I think they're requesting is the, Hangar E is still trying to, and I know Dan's working on getting a quote on how much it would cost to get a light towards Hangar E. And I'm slipping on what the third one was.
Aeronautical use standards.
Yeah, that's it, aeronautical use standards, that's what it was. And get that put to bed as to, once and for all, what those hangars should be used for. That's basically all I have.
All right, thank you. Senior Senator had their meeting last week. Everything is moving forward good there, shouldn't be any significant changes in the budget, anything else there. Got out to Arts in the Park, Night to Unite, meeting with a couple developers as well. We received an offer for purchase of some property out by the airport. Sam, you kind of went through it in the EDA earlier tonight, but just want to make the council aware of that at this point. We're looking at a fairly large acreage portion. And that offer was presented to the city. And just to get a gauge, the EDA was, was definitely interested in moving forward with it. Before we can have a closed session, before we can do that discussion, we have to make sure that there's enough interest, you know, with the council as well, to pursue that and take it for the next step, anyway, get appraisals and things like that. So, EDA was a full support, I believe everybody was looking at it.
Absolutely.
You know, it's, it's a formality to get the ball rolling, I guess, is where we're at now. So, just want to make sure the council's in favor of looking at it as well.
Is, Dan, help me with sequencing on this, does EDA take a look at it first as lead? And then it goes to council, is it a joint meeting? How does the sequencing work of something like that?
Yeah, I believe it'd go to EDA because it'd be, the, the purpose of it would be for a potential business park, so that would be under EDA's wheelhouse in terms of consideration. You know, because again, they're the ones that are trying to spur economic development. So, I think it would start and kind of grow in there, and then at some point, council would weigh in on the, you know, because there's the budget control at the council and, you know, the interface of the two there. So, at this point, when we looked at it, you know, it was, you know, with the economic angle for the potential business park, you know, viability, the EDA was kind of the natural fit, since there's, that's what they're kind of tasked with, that group is tasked with.
I'm not opposed to EDA taking a look at it, they're taking the lead and take a look at it, makes, I'm open to that. I guess I would just be cautious of, let's be careful of the opportunity. City-owned land has not been a fruitful investment for us in the past, but not to say that this isn't one that's worth EDA taking a look at.
You don't want to know until you look at it, as simple as it is, just talk.
Let's see, where is that, got that covered? About it for, other than all of us having a very busy week with interviews and more coming up, so.
Time.
Two quick updates, I attended the Cable Commission meeting. We had Principal Caldwell from the high school join us to talk about opportunities for continued partnership between Cable Commission and the high school. There is some initial pilot opportunities that are being considered, and then something that could work into more permanent programming for both. Also went through first draft of the, actually, I think this was our second pass of the budget and should be in good shape to come forward to council, no significant changes. Most of the changes with Scandia dropping out had been rolled into last year's budget. So, this is pretty much a normalized operation, operational budget, we'll see that when we workshop it. And then also attended Night to Unite, rode with Officer Carlson for the evening, had a great time. Great to see everybody, great participation, thanks to all the city staff who put that together and spend time away from their own neighbors and families with the community, so that's it.
All right, great. And so now, we need a motion to go to closed meeting.
So, I'll move, Mr. Mayor, I make a motion, I'm sorry.
We got to read...
Bridgette did a very specific script.
I'm going to read it verbatim, okay.
Is that okay?
If I may just briefly, Mayor, so Mayor members of the council, there is a script, if someone could read it. The last sentence is the questionable piece, is whether or not there's...
Go ahead, go ahead, read it.
So, if the council, Your Honor, if the council is planning on discussing any matters after the closed session or that were not on the agenda related to a city administrator hiring process, then whoever reads the motion, please don't read the last sentence because we will reconvene the open meeting to have that discussion, if that's council's intent. Otherwise, the last sentence reads that once the council reconvenes, we will adjourn the meeting. So, I don't know what council's pleasure is at that point, but it's important for purposes of the open meeting law that we are specific as to what's going to happen after we complete the closed session.
Well, go ahead, read it.
Are we intending on having further discussion after?
Well, I don't think, we don't need an action, right?
Mayor members of the council, the way the closed portion, or the language I have drafted for council consideration reads as it relates to the closed meeting, it indicates that once the closed meeting is completed, the city council will reconvene the open meeting portion in council chambers. If that is the council's pleasure, then that is the language that should be read. And the following sentence stating that we will simply adjourn the meeting once we reconvene should not be read.
So, I guess if we don't read that last sentence, we have the option of doing either way, just reconvene and adjourn, or reconvene and discuss something if needed.
I guess I'm unclear, okay. So, I move to close the meeting pursuant to Minnesota State Statute Sections thirteen D zero five subdivision three B, pursuant to the attorney-client privilege to discuss runway design dispute with short Elliot Hendrickson. The closed meeting will be held in the Forest Lake Room and will commence immediately. Once the closed meeting is completed, the city council will reconvene the open meeting portion of tonight's city council meeting in council chambers, there being no further items on the agenda. Once back in open session, council will simply adjourn the meeting.
Okay, so you just want to adjourn?
I'll second it.
All right. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.